Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, December 6th, 2023. Can I have a motion to open?
Make a motion to open the zoning board of appeals Wednesday, December 6th, 2023 meeting.
Thank you.
What was in favor? All right, always good.
First on the docket, continuation of application 2023-6 for 912 Salem Street, the applicant's Mark A. Abair. A public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, as amended for application 2023-6, made by Mark A. Abair for the premises located at 912 Salem Street, MAP 41, Lot 095, in the industrial, one residential R1 and residential R2 zoning districts, and owned by William T. Bryan III for a special permit in accordance with the Section 50.4.5 Table of Uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw for a contractor's yard. Annie, where are we with this one?
Alrighty, so at our last meeting, the board was feeling like they were in the position to start drafting up a decision for this, to be able to kind of take a look at it in real time during a meeting and talk about the different conditions and whatnot. So, sorry, I'm pulling that up now so I can look at it while we're talking about it. But that is in your packet, and you were sent it a few weeks ago. And in it, you can see where I had made some notes about specific places for the board to further discuss. Okay, here we go. Alright, so, you know, there are the findings for the seven different thresholds or criteria for granting a special permit. There's the social, economic, community needs, traffic flow and safety, et cetera, et cetera. So, the board had talked about all of these items throughout the discussions we've been having, but never so pointedly. So, I thought it would be good for the board to, you know, fully outline their findings on those. And then, you can also see some conditions that I added in there from conversations that we had had previously at meetings. Notes there include, I know at the last meeting, we had been asking whether or not DBA's business applications go to the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance, because that is within the clerk's office, and they do. So, they would go through Sam. He would see it as a zoning enforcement officer. He said that when he came to town, that is actually something that they changed in the process, so that he would be able to see those. Another note was, I kind of put in some placeholder hours, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. is what are the normal operating hours within the industrial zone for uses that are allowed as of right? And then, I mean, you just see kind of my other little, like, we haven't made a vote yet, so that's blank, things like that, but...
Alright, let's run through some of the findings and just kind of touch on each one then. Alright, first finding, social, social, economic and community needs are served by the proposal. What do we think, gentlemen?
I think the additional tax revenue, without putting additional strain on the infrastructure, tools, and police, fire, I think would be beneficial for the community.
I would tend to agree with that.
Agreed.
Alright. Next, traffic flow, safety, including parking and loading. I know we had a little bit of discussion on this, but I think, I think at the end of the discussion, I was kind of satisfied myself with how everything was, was laid out and some of the change, some of the enhancements to the plan that the applicant did.
I think the traffic study that they provided really laid it out and broke it down for anticipated traffic and the impact it would have on the area, which was minimal.
Yep.
John, you good with that one?
Yes.
Alright. Next, accuracy of utilities and other public services. I think, I think that location is pretty well suited for all the needs for any, um, public service or utility needs.
Yeah, I think the only utilities that would have an issue would be electrical, and they don't have a set plan on that yet, but that's just a matter of time to get equipment and...
Right, that's more supply chain issue than anything else at this point, I think, right?
I don't think there's any issue.
Yeah.
No.
Neighborhood character and social structures.
Well, being industrial, I think an industrial building would be fitting for the area.
Yeah, and plus with the setback as well, it's going to be, you know, impact to the street level is probably going to be minimal at best, I would think, as well.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Yep.
Good? Alright, impacts on the natural environment? I mean, I think so, obviously where this is going, by the, by the buffer zone, there's, you know, there's no precaution, but I think that can be worked around. Looks like the plan calls for that, for that caution as well, so I think as long as everything goes to plan, I think I'm okay with things, myself.
Yeah, and I think with the snow management plan that they put together and then the future peer review that will be going over that, will really make sure that there's no impact on the natural environment.
Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Right, next, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment.
Can only help it.
Agreed.
I agree.
Agreed.
Yep.
And last, consistency with the town of Groveland Community Development Plan or the town of Groveland Master Plan? And again, I think, you know, as we talked about, I think, you know, increase to the tax, bringing businesses into town only helps things, right?
Yep.
So, there goes the, the findings, and then the, so the conditions, as noted, just to, just to go through this again real quick. Condition one, use of property as authorized here under, as a contractor's yard defined by Groveland zoning bylaw, Section 2.1, naturally. The applicant shall adhere to regulations outlined in the Groveland zoning bylaw, Section 6.2, Aqua Protection Overlay. Three, if a junk removal business were to be considered for lease, the leasing must appear at a regularly scheduled meeting of the board to discuss the business plan. Four, the hours of operation shall be Monday to Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., which, which are the normal operating hours for that industrial zone. Signs shall adhere to the Groveland zoning bylaw, Article 11, sign regulations. Six, all parking shall be off-street for employees and patrons. Any expansion of any parking may require further permitting. Seven, deliveries and pickups are allowed during operating hours only. Eight, no floor drains. Nine, no manufacturing. Ten, no petroleum chemical, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a note there?
Yeah, for no manufacturing, I mean, industrial areas for light manufacturing, that's zoned by right. So, I was a little curious why we put in no manufacturing.
I don't remember if it was from a conversation we had been having, or if this was a...
Should we put, should we kind of alter that to be like, no more than, I'm going to correct my phrasing here, but, you know, no more than light manufacturing, you know, as, as by right in the zone?
Yeah, by right, you can have light manufacturing, right? Limited to light manufacturing?
Right.
Without a hearing?
I will, I get what you're saying to keeping it to light manufacturing, I'll, I'll...
I don't know, would we need to specify that? Because that's, that's what the zone calls for.
Yeah, I, it's, it allows for it, so there's really no need for it to be in here.
Right.
And we don't allow for heavy manufacturing, period.
So, it's kind of, it's...
It's a moot point.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
We can strike that one.
Yeah, I don't know why I put that in there.
Strike it.
Sorry. Sorry for the confusion.
Strike nine, just because it's kind of superfluous. Oh, excuse me. Ten, no petroleum chemical solvents hazardous or toxic materials or any other substances deemed hazardous shall be stored or used on the premises. Eleven, no site, no onsite storage, excuse me, of pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers, fuel, or any potentially toxic or hazardous materials in quantities greater than those associated with a normal household use. Twelve, no discharge of non-sanitary waste. Thirteen, all sanitary disposal systems shall meet Title V CMR 310 rules and regulations. Fourteen, no underground storage tanks allowed.
I have a question about that. In terms of underground storage tanks, if the septic system ends up being a tight system, that would be a storage tank.
We could specify no underground storage tanks with the exception of...
Septic.
Septic, yeah, your septic system.
And then, what about food grease? Storage tanks. If a light manufacturer goes in there for food packaging, they potentially could need a tank for storing food grease.
I think that's...
Underground?
Would that be underground, or would that be part of the...
Typically, that's underground.
Really?
Yeah.
That seems unusual.
Um...
You take that on as a, you know, as it comes basis?
Yeah.
Or do we have to, and I'd hate to limit it now, but in the same token, you don't want something that...
Is that, is that consistent with a contractor's yard?
Hmm, I would say that it, I don't know, that's tricky.
And I won't, I won't push that.
Because it's...
Doesn't really seem...
John makes the point that it's not really, like, a restaurant wouldn't be considered with a contractor's use, but if it was like a...
Well, I know light manufacturing can be anything.
Light manufacturing could be...
Packaging jerky.
Yeah, I don't know what that process is like.
But it's a contractor's yard.
It's true.
Primarily, I mean, that's what we're permitting it as, so. Although, that certainly could be a future use, it's not what we're approving today.
Sounds good.
I think you can amend it one way, but not the other. You know what I'm saying? We can relax a restriction, but I think trying to get one in after we say no, I think is going to be...
So, the definition of contractor's yard includes premises used by a contractor, subcontractor, or other person doing business in construction, landscaping and related trades. And I wouldn't say...
So, food prep doesn't actually fall in that, so, yeah.
Yeah. But do we want to, with the, with the no underground storage tanks, with the exception of septic?
Yes.
Okay. I have that already, okay. There are obviously some repeats in here now that I'm looking at this. I really kind of just threw everything that we typically put in a permit in this, so every, we would, we would have it all.
I'd rather overkill than underkill.
Yeah, this was definitely a document to be torn up. So, like, I'm looking at applicant shall meet all state rules and regulations for disposal and storage of waste when it already says that the sanitary disposal system has to meet Title V. It's a little redundant saying the same thing.
I mean, yes, but I mean, disposal, disposal weight doesn't actually mean septic, right, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. So then, next one after that, any change of use to the special permit would require a subsequent hearing prior to any changes, being allowed to commence and would require a new filing.
Yep.
The applicant shall receive any federal, state and local permits required to operate. A permit is subject to recall if written complaints are received given due process. And in accordance with Groveland zoning bylaw, Section 14.6E, if the rights authorized by, to the applicant by said special permit are not exercised within three years from the date of granting of said special permit, filing date with the town clerk and the board of, of the board's decision, then such rights granted shall lapse unless substantial use thereof has been, has commenced, except for good cause. Alright, so, it's like a, except for striking number nine there, so we're good with all the conditions as we laid them out?
Yes.
Alright, is there any other discussion on the application or potential decision before we potentially put this out for a vote?
I think we should hear from the applicant if they have any questions about this.
I have, I did send this to the RJ O'Connell team prior to, and we're used to seeing Steve or April, but they weren't available tonight, so John is with the RJ O'Connell team, who's representing the applicant. And Steve told me he had brought John up to, up to speed on the process, or on the, on what we've been up to, so...
Alright, is there anyone from the applicant or from the representatives that would like, do you see anything addressing the application or potential decision?
Good evening. Hello, my name is John Rouse, from RJ O'Connell Associates. I'm not sure if you guys can hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, it seems like you guys kind of went through the, you know, the decision from, from before, just stating, you know, the, what we talked about in the last hearing. One of the things you guys didn't mention, that you mentioned in the item that's listed was the no junk removal businesses, which included was one of the main focus items from the last hearing. One of the other items, I'll just briefly talk about this quickly, was the buffer zone impacts. I think we had, per your request, we modified the building total square footage to shrink down the, and shrink down the development area to get the accessway in the rear section of the building out of the 100-foot buffer, so. So, I think, you know, we've been working with you guys, it's been, it seems like it's been going smoothly and, and, you know, all the special permit criteria you guys already went through, so, but, yeah, I think that's it, not much more. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any, any other comments?
Nope.
Alright, do we have a...
Make a motion to accept the decision for special permit application number 2023-6, 912 Salem Street, with the conditions set forth.
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Approved unanimously.
Sorry.
Approved unanimously.
Alright, I will finalize this, you know, clean up some of that language revolving the, the acceptance of the septic system for underground storage tanks, as well as for the findings, those seven items, I need to, I just took notes, I need to put them in complete sentences. So, I will get that all squared away, and then I will let everyone know when this is ready for signatures.
Perfect.
Hopefully, I'm, I'll be away next week, so I'm hoping sometime by the end of the month. It's pretty, I obvi, I have most of it done, so, should be all set by then.
Awesome, thank you. And, thank you, gentlemen, good luck. Alright, next on the agenda here.
Thank you.
So, continuing discussion regarding 154 Center Streets. So, 154 Center, if the board remembers, so we had drafted a letter of clarification regarding, of some, that we wanted to have against, you know, some of the conditions that we'd had in the original approval. That was done and reviewed and then sent off to council to be reviewed as well by, by the town. And Annie, do you have that feedback from, from council?
Yes, you do. Sorry, let me... Yeah, okay, so it is, I put her letter first, so, yeah, you can see the letter from the attorney.
Alright, so I, so I think that most, and I'm going to paraphrase here, but most of what we had in the letter, the council said they were okay with, with the exception of the clarification on the dump trucks versus dumpsters that we wanted to include, which we, which we cannot include. Am I summarizing correctly there?
Yeah, it's really just, she... Let's, she, she more or less gives her opinion on that and under decision condition number two, and then kind of quotes back to that in numerous places throughout it, but, yeah, more or less, she said that dumpsters and dump trunks are different things, and you cannot say that they're the same.
At this point, because we already, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Jason?
And I believe she also said that we would have to change, modify the conditions, the special permit, which is something we could do, and she also cited the previous case files that allowed the board to do that.
Right.
But my biggest question is, I don't think I would question that dump trucks are different from dumpsters, but I do question whether or not there's dump trucks there versus trash trucks.
Um, to, for your, sorry, for your first point, I think what she was saying, that she found no support that the board could modify a special permit in the absence of an application by the special permit holder, so we wouldn't be able to modify it.
Not modify.
Correct.
Did I misread it? I think that's how I read it as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can find the...
Yeah, it's in the third, her, the last sentence of her third paragraph. So, we wouldn't, so unless the applicant comes in, which...
Yes, there is, however, no power under statute or case law for board of appeals to modify a special permit absent of an application for modification submitted by the owner of the property or a party on behalf of the owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, the only other question I have is the dump trucks, because I don't remember talking about dump trucks. Trash trucks.
There are trucks with, like, dumpsters on the back of them. I mean, that's not typically what a dump truck is.
That's correct.
It's, yeah, the fact that she went to dump trucks, I, I didn't understand it either.
Right, well, dump trucks are typically used for hauling materials, earth, gravel, and construction materials. Trash trucks are designed to haul trash, household refuse, which is what they load onto those trucks, and it's what those trucks are designed to handle.
I agree, I think, though, that... Or, well, I mean, I, I see where you're coming from. I do think, though, that it wouldn't matter, because a trash truck still isn't a dumpster.
The box on the back of a trash truck is a dumpster. And I think that correlation can be made with that, versus a dump, or during, versus a dump truck. So, that's something I just would like some more clarification on.
I, I, I agree, I, I don't know where she came up with the term dump truck.
Right.
Because we don't reference the term dump truck anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what we tried to define it as in, in the letter we drafted was, you know, let me see, I lost my spot here. Any conveyance device, receptacle, or other medium that could contain any type or volume of debris, material, garbage, trash, refuse, junk, discarded machinery, substance, or waste of any kind, regardless of who's responsible for the loading. So, so we, so as, in essence, we weren't, we were trying to say, anything you put, anything you put household refuse in is anything you put household refuse in.
Well, how did we get to dump trucks? Did we okay dump trucks on the permit?
No.
No.
Oh, we didn't, and, and it's not listed anywhere. That's why I don't understand where she came up, where she came up with that term.
Doesn't he have to reapply to keep dump trucks in the yard?
I don't think, I don't think he'd have to reapply.
What I'm saying is, I don't remember talking about dump trucks. I remember talking about trucks with dumpsters on them.
Yes.
But, a truck with a dumpster on it...
So, so, for example, you know, he has, part of his business is that he drops dumpsters at the site, and the truck goes away. It stays on-site as the contractor or whoever needs to use it, and then a truck comes out, hooks up the dumpster, pulls it on to the flatbed essentially, and pulls it away.
Yeah.
He has those, and then he, then he has the ones with the trucks that have that type of conveyance built into the truck that can't be dropped, it's just part of the truck.
Yes, agreed, and I think that is where the, the difference lies. Sorry, I'm trying to find the application, and I'm having a hard time.
So, I think the board would just like clarification from council as to the definition of a dump truck, as opposed to a...
As opposed to a trash truck?
As opposed to a trash truck, yes.
If you replace dump truck with a trash truck, does that change the opinion?
Alright.
Agreed.
Or even, I mean, I'd even go a step further than that, that we weren't honestly trying to label it. We were trying to say, anything that holds trash.
Right.
Yeah.
And like, like she said, in terms of, we haven't labeled dump trucks as trash, as dumpsters in the past, but a trash truck has never been discussed here as a dumpster, but it is today.
Right.
So, it would be us labeling it now.
I am listening.
Yeah, and again, I think what the spirit of this debate is, was trying to get at was, when we had the discussion with him during the application process, the board felt we were, that we were clear about any receptacle used to haul away debris from any of his clients.
Yep.
Alright, we didn't want to make the distinction, and I think during, during the debate, during the meetings, rather, we even specified a couple, you know, a couple of things, and, again, I think to our, you know, we just didn't specify it in the, in the ruling, and that's what we're trying to make sure that, you know, all our bases are covered, that were intended to be covered, essentially.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't think we discussed dump trucks when we were doing it.
We did not.
And I don't think he asked for dump trucks.
Now, going back to... So, we didn't, didn't specify dump trucks. My notes from the session, that session say, we talked about storage of trucks and dumpsters, quote unquote.
That's what I'm saying, so now we're defining what a dump truck is.
Yeah, the quote, the quote from his counsel was, any storage of trucks and dumpsters, if they are full dumpsters being brought to the site, the next morning will be in this area pointing to the northwest corner of the map. Vehicles or empty dumpsters, they are stored up here pointing to the northeast corner, behind the fence, nothing is being stored at the front, the front of the site. So, so he refers to trucks and dumpsters multiple times.
But did he say dump trucks?
He didn't say dump trucks, he said trucks.
Well. He didn't say it either.
Right. And then, earlier in that, in that same meeting, I had expressed concern about anything non-empty being kept on-site, and, and asked for a single, and asked for acceptance of a single overnight for anything non-empty, and the applicant verbally agreed to that, anything non-empty.
Which he also agreed to the last meeting that it was yet, that nothing was, the trucks weren't there more than one business there.
Right, as far as we know, that's not, that's not an issue at this point. It's, it's more the verbiage of the anything point. You know, you know, I think the discussion we were having was about anything his business used to haul away refuse. But, we've kind of gotten pinned into verbiage of specific types of equipment.
Yeah.
So, so, for council, because this really is more so up to them than us.
Right.
I want to make sure I'm asking them what you want asked, so... I want to make sure I'm asking them what you want asked. So first, she wants to, or I'm sorry, first, it's where did she come up with dump trucks, I guess?
Right. So she's saying in her, in her verbiage, she's saying, she, she further applies that if the ZBA intends to include quote unquote dump trucks as quote unquote dumpsters, then decision will need to be modified. Where, where include, I think the intent was to, to just have the clarification that when we said, I believe we said dumpsters in the decision, but we intended it to be any medium for hauling away refuse. And we were, we were using the term dumpsters as the colloquial for any such medium.
Okay. Um, okay. I mean, that kind of covers, covers the other things I have.
Yeah, because what he uses to haul the trash away on the trucks that have a box built into them is, is a custom trash truck. It's not a dumpster, a dump truck.
It's not, yeah, it's not a dump truck. Right. You know, but again, it's.
Dump truck, the box doesn't disengage from the truck.
Right. Right. So it's, so really, you know, what, what the board would prefer is that, at least I believe, speaking, speaking, you know, on behalf of myself, is that whether it's a dump, a detached dumpster, a, a truck, if he throws trash in the back of his Volvo, depending if he has a Volvo, you know, then it doesn't matter what he hauls it away in. We're talking about anything he uses to haul it away. And I believe that was the only point of contention she found with the letter, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Um, I believe so as well. Um, yeah, it was, it was more or less, there was no issue.
Yeah. She gave us some good verbiage on every point, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought that she did a very good job in the way in which she, she kind of put this together and analyzed it. Um, okay. I will reach out to council through our town administrator with, with these points.
All right. And you, and you can tell the town administrator that I'd be happy to jump on a call or something like that if that, she feels that might be prudent.
Sure.
Or I can come down here, whatever, on behalf of the board.
Sure. Yeah, if any, I, I, I might send over what I am going to send over to the town administrator, who was just going to forward what I send to the council. But I might forward it to you first, just to make sure that I am truly portraying what the board is looking for.
Gotcha. Sounds good.
Yeah. I'll try to do that tomorrow morning so that we have.
And then I will say on a, on a separate note, the, he did plant the arborvitae in the front of the property.
Thanks.
So, so those are up and in, so. So, so, so when those are, when those are growing in, they'll provide some nice, nice cover from the street. So, Jazzy, if you're watching, thank you for that. All right. Any more discussion on 154 Center before we move on?
No. Are there any restrictions on signage or anything on that stuff?
Yeah. We have a false section of our zoning bylaw that's just dedicated to signs. Yeah.
Just curious. I didn't know what he's got or what he doesn't have.
Uh, I mean, there's really no signage except for his one small one by the entrance to the, the property noting, I think it says like space for lease or something to that end.
Something along those lines. Yeah.
Yeah. And the for rent signs and all that stuff can stay there, I think. I don't know what size they are, but I think there's two of them there now.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that they're small. I know these, I don't know if there's two, there might be one on either side of the, of the entrance.
I think there is.
Uh, I mean, I think, I would think they're small enough that they should fall within the bylaw, I think. They're not big, they're not big signs.
I'm, I'm not sure. I can have Sam take a look.
I know he's been driving around town looking at, at signs.
He has. We had a discussion about signs this.
We did it till like five square feet.
This morning. I, I don't know it off the top of my head. It doesn't usually come up with the stuff I work directly with.
You've got a right to advertise and stuff.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's all.
Um, I can have Sam take a look, though. He might have already, in his travels throughout town, taken a look at other, taken a look at it already.
Not surprising, but yeah.
I'll, I'll have, I'll send Sam a note tomorrow so we have something for our next meeting.
All right. Next, Soul Street update on the drainage.
Yep. So pretty straightforward, more so just for, you know, clarity of information and whatnot. Did I, I didn't include it, dang it. Sorry about that. I will send that out. Send out TEC report. Um, sorry about that. It wasn't in your meeting packet. TEC did a stormwater report on the Soul Street project. There are some comments for the applicant to address, but it wasn't anything super major. According to Sam, he's this close at getting building permits, so that's great news. Foundation permits should be able to be issued whenever the applicant is ready, once we get over that little hurdle. So, so the project's moving, moving along at pace.
Right.
So that's exciting.
Very nice.
Yep. But I will send you those TEC reports tomorrow. I apologize. I've been so good at getting my meeting packets in order, dang it.
That's all right. We know you're good for it. All right. Next, closeout of 20 Bear Hill Road slash Cedar Dale. Closeout for the escrow account for the project.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. The, that project, we, for the zoning board, we had a consultant do the radio frequency peer review on Verizon's radio frequency report. And so this has been closed out for a while now. So I'm just trying to make sure all our escrow accounts are not just sitting there for 20 years, and then the planner in 20 years is like, what the heck is this? So just trying to be timely with it. They are hoping, I can't remember if I said this at the last meeting, so apologies, they are hoping to get that tower online by the beginning of next summer. They're in the process of pulling building permits right now. So.
All right.
Yay. But we do need a motion to close out that escrow account.
Any discussion or questions by the board? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close out the escrow account for 20 Bear Hill Road, Cedar Dale.
Is there a second? All right, second, John. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, next, the new and improved application. Andy, you did some stuff.
I did do some stuff. So this is again, more so a document to be torn apart by the board. Just, you know, looking at what our application is now, I put in a blank copy of it in here as well, just for a little compare and contrast. It just, I find that it, when I'm looking through the, our application packets from applications when I wasn't here and I'm trying to figure out what a project was without just having the knowledge already, I, I struggle looking at this to really figure out what that project actually was for. If you look at the first page of our existing application, it doesn't even provide you with a space for the name of the applicant, the location of the project, anything like that. So it's just, it's just not as user friendly as I think it could be or just as useful. So I, like many planners do, looked to see what other planners did. And I borrowed other communities' applications and kind of morphed it into one for us to take a look at, see what we think about it, what we like about it, what we don't like about it, and kind of go from there. There's definitely some wonky things formatting wise, but I didn't want to perfect it when I figured we would still be making some changes to it. I don't know if it would be more beneficial for the board to take this paper copy and maybe do a red line version of it. And then for the next meeting or before the next meeting, you can drop off a red line version of my office or something along those lines. Because I know it is kind of difficult to edit a document like this without, like, kind of doing it individually. But I just think, I think it would be good for the board to have an updated set of plans. This also, the one I put together, provides a more thorough checklist for what's needed in the application. It forces, quote unquote, forces applicants to explain, like, why they deserve to get a variance, why they should get a special permit.
I saw that, that section seven there.
Yeah.
I like that.
It's great. I think I, I took that.
If you do say so yourself.
I, I, I took this, no, I won't take credit for it. I, I believe Georgetown, a lot of this was Georgetown. So anyway, just something to take a look at and then maybe get back to me on. But that would be a great, I would, I would feel, I would feel very good if we were able to redo our application.
All right, sounds good. I think we can, we can do that and then give you, give you some feedback when you're back.
Great.
Quick question. Does the current application require certified plot plan?
So that's one thing I wanted to talk to the board about, and we can certainly have that conversation now. No, it does not. I was speaking with Sam, who is the, um, he also works in West Newbury as the zoning enforcement officer. And I believe he said, or he also used to work in Newbury as well. And I believe he said that in one of those communities, they require it for everything, even if it's, you know, a use, a use permit, which I agree. I think it is a little excessive. So I wasn't really, and I, I wanted the board's opinion. I'm not really sure how to then.
It, it seems wildly excessive if someone's coming in to get like business hours approved.
Yeah, like for, like a, like a pub 97 or something. Exactly.
Exactly. Or a change of ownership kind of thing, like.
Agreed.
So, yeah.
I just, my, my only hesitation with, the, the reason I didn't fully take it off is because I would hate for an applicant to be asking my advice as the town planner, like, oh, do I need a plot plan for this? And I were to say no, and then they come in front of the board and they're like, but where's your plot plan? We want one in this scenario. It's, it's kind of like with the planning board wanting a traffic studies for certain projects. I hate for them to get their whole application together and then at the first meeting, the planning board to say, stop, we need a traffic analysis. So that was kind of one of the conversations I wanted to have. But I do agree, for a pub 97, it doesn't make sense for things like that. We could put a list together of the special permits that we issue and then make kind of a list saying that generally, if you are applying for a permit for one of these uses, it doesn't require a plot plan. But it will be at the discretion of the board to make a final decision.
Yeah. No, I, I like that idea. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I agree with you, though. When I saw that Georgetown did that, I was like, oof, that's expensive for applicants.
When people buy a home today, do they still get the plot plan?
Um, it depends. It depends on who you're selling, who you're buying it from.
Yeah, I thought you, yeah, they, don't you need to get.
When, that's what the home inspector used to work on. He used to have to have a plot plan.
Yeah, we get a lot of, I get a lot of folks asking.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back to when I bought mine.
Yeah, it really depends. Like for subdivision, if you're, if you're in a subdivision, there's generally something because the planning board will require a surveyed plot plan to close it out. But if, if you're in, if you're somewhere on Seven Star Road and your home has been there for 200 years, I don't know.
Yeah, I feel like she's targeting you.
Yeah, no, I know.
All right. So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll give that one once over and give you some feedback.
Perfect.
Right along here. Approval minutes from the September 6, 2023 meeting. Has, has everyone had a chance to peruse?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I motion that we approve the zoning board of appeals minutes from Wednesday, September 6, 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Thank you. Andy, town planner update or any items not reasonably anticipated?
All righty. Um, not a whole lot. One item on December 19th, that is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, we are going to be hosting a community information session type thing for the updated housing production plan. We are working on that with MVPC, so our local planning commission. So that will be in here, in this room at seven, or I'm sorry, 6:00 PM on December 19th. And that will specifically focus on, you know, what type of housing folks want to see in Groveland, where they want to see it, and things like that. We are also looking to be receiving a application for a special permit for a restaurant in what was formerly your place and ours. You've probably seen the sign in Elm Park.
Mexican.
The Mexican restaurant. So we should be receiving a application from them. And then other than that, I think that more or less does it.
All right. Any other board business? All right. I think we're good. I'll, I'll make a motion to close the meeting at 11:15 PM?
Second.
All those in favor? Have a good night, folks.